The March 27, 2025 Des Moines City Council Meeting is now called to order. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So to all the public who are joining us tonight, welcome and thank you for attending. For those watching online or Channel 21, please know that we cannot attend to our phones from the dais. However, if you experience technical problems, please email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Let the record show that six council members are present. Well, let me finish. So we do have one council member attending online and hybrid option and Councilmember Nutting's face is up there. And then Councilmember Oxiger has asked to be excused. He has the flu, so do have a motion to excuse. So moved Councilmember Grace Matsui for the first and Deputy Mayor Simonetz for the second. All in favor? Six-zero. Thank you for excusing Councilmember Oxiger. Okay. Next is correspondence. Do we have any correspondents not previously received by the council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, now it's time for comments from the public. We ask that you keep your comments respectful and please recognize that any person speaking or acting in a way that's disruptive to the meeting will be removed. You'll have three minutes to speak. When you do come to the podium, please state your name and city of residence. First of all, first up, we have a special guest tonight. We do have a visiting council member I want to recognize, John Boyd from the city of Kent. Thanks for joining us tonight. And a special guest tonight, our newly appointed King County Councilmember for District Five, DeShawn Quinn will be talking to us tonight. Come on up, DeShawn. Thank you for being here. So he will have five minutes to speak to us about the subject and introduce himself to us. Thanks for being here, DeShawn.
Yeah, good evening, Des Moines. I would just say in particular, Mayor Buxton, deputy mayor and council members and residents, my name is DeShawn Quinn. I am the District Five representative for the King County Council, just recently appointed. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I heard you had the Parks Levy on the agenda, so I wanted to give you an update. So I'm excited to share that the upcoming Parks Levy proposal to maintain our parks and trails prepares us to adapt to climate change and expand opportunities for all kids in our district to play. I want to say, Des Moines specifically, the reason why I came to the council meeting is that cities need to see themselves represented in a regional parks levy. Unlike previous levies, this proposal uses an equity model that benefits South King County cities. This includes both a bump for cities with unmet needs and a 60% population and 40% assessed value distribution model instead of the 50-50 model used previously. And as a result, cities like Des Moines will receive more pass-through dollars than previously. So for example, if it was just the 50-50 proposal, if it was 50-50 and even the 60-40, and then we just recently changed in Budget Committee to have it more equitable in South King County cities, it was going to be, the allocation was going to be $1,795,000. Des Moines' proposal goes up to $2,487,000. So I wanted to give kind of a real time number for you. And also, as your district representative, I reached out to the cities and said, what do you need? And I made sure in the proposal that Des Moines would receive $3 million for their parks and ballfields transition. So I wanted to list that. And this will help three existing and dedicated softball fields into multipurpose, year-round artificial turf softball and soccer fields. And then for South King County, it's not just good for Des Moines, it's a win for District Five. The general parks and recreation grants to allow for communities to fund their highest priorities are tripled in this proposal due to the high demand for communities countywide. There is also a new $13.5 million ballfield grant that will build access to ballfields across the district, creating more spaces for kids and families to play, practice and gather. And that's one of the things that I championed because when we were kids, you know, we had access to ballfields. Now we're fully built out. It's a little bit more challenging. School districts have distinct maintenance costs that they want us all to adhere to, so sometimes the ballfields aren't available. And I also want to say that there is a $55 million investment to complete the key section of the Lake DeSousan Trail. Transfer project, which I was involved in 20 years ago when I walked the halls of the county council, you know, highlighting the east side trail and what's not available at South King County. So at the time, Councilmember Patterson was a champion, and I agreed with her, and we continued on that legacy. So I just wanted to say that I'm pleased to share that the Budget Committee also reduced the levy rate from the executive's proposal to $0.23 per 1,000. What does that mean? So the original proposal would have been $206 annually. It's now dropped to 198, so it's $16.53 per month for medium-value home. So the next step for the proposal is for it to be considered by the Regional Policy Committee on April 3, and then the county council will consider whether or not to place it on the primary ballot for the voters' consideration in August. We've really worked hard as...
Keep going, sir.
Okay, is that three?
No, you have five minutes. And I've also asked for some Q and A times, so just take a deep breath.
Okay, absolutely. Great, great. All right, so it'll go to the Regional Policy Committee on April 3, and then the King County Council will consider it for August. And, you know, I think strongly the work that the Budget Committee was to modify the levy to ensure that it's smart, fair, future-focused investment that delivers for Des Moines and District Five and South King County. And I want to end with this because I've always wanted to do this. I served on the city council for 16 years. And I said, anytime I go out to a city council meeting, I'm going to thank you all for your public service. So, I mean, 16 years, late nights, agreements, disagreements, so I just also wanted to share that with you. And now I'm available for any questions. One more thing, because I know this might come up. Before I was appointed, I worked for six years for King County Metro. So if you have water taxi questions, I'm really close to Terry Federer, and so I've been working with him. We're really close, so happy to answer questions.
Thank you. So as you may know, this subject, there will be a discussion much later in the meeting tonight, but I wanted to, because I didn't want you to, thank you so much for your time and coming out. I didn't want you to have to stay until that time. So we do have a few minutes here for Q and A for you. Thank you for that as well. So does anybody have questions for councilmember? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, Councilmember, County Councilmember Quinn. Don't want to get confused here, although we got room if you want to come. You know, parks are really a key component of making any community livable. And King County Parks is huge. It was described, I sit on the SCA pick committee, and, you know, it was described as a gargantuan piece to try to manage. How much of this levy is going to operations of, and maintenance of existing parks? How much of this is going to expansion of opportunities for people, particularly here in the King County? And do you, can you quantify that at this point?
Yeah. I would say the reason why the levy rate went up is to emphasize operations and maintenance, right? Protect and conserve and keep safe the parks properties across the county. I want to say, and I could be wrong about the number, I think it might be 467 million is dedicated to operations and maintenance. And that's a lot, but if you think about what we went through just coming out of the pandemic, what we found was the folks that were on the front lines were the people that had to do the parks, maintain it, the other challenges with homelessness, you know, they were interacting directly. And inflation is a significant factor here. And so that is why, and it doesn't matter what your jurisdiction is, right? I mean, you know it very well. It can be the county, you know, inflation is inflation, and so there's a significant portion dedicated to operations and maintenance. For nothing else, and then I'm sorry, to answer your question, there are dollars for conservation and stewardship and protecting forests. So all the fundamentals are in there, but a significant part is to keep up with inflation based on the impacts. Hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
So you talked about a little over $2 million coming Des Moines away.
Three million.
Three million, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. So 2.4 million in the new allocation, but an additional $3 million for specific requests that came out of...
And is that, is there a number annually we get over the life of this levy?
Yeah, over six years.
So over six years. So take the 5.4 over six years is 900,000 a year?
I think it's 3 million for the project.
3 million for the projects?
It's over the...
Which would be paid as the projects get done and reimbursed and so forth. And then the 2.4 over six years, okay, so roughly 400 grand a year in what we'll call maintenance or money we can use.
I hope I got that right.
You're probably, we're probably close. I know we had some information earlier today, and I just wanted, and we'd been warned it but changed, or actually notified, I wouldn't say warned, is actually better on our behalf.
It's better, yeah.
So the last question is, a lot of these levies, Seattle's always been the golden child in this, and the South Sound has taken the burden. And now, obviously, with the South, you know, South Cities Association and so forth, we actually represent a population pretty much comparable to Seattle. What is the, what would you tell the residents down here that typically or may inherently think Seattle's getting the better deal of this? What would you, what would, if we were to give three points to try to sell this, what would those be?
Oh, wow, okay, that's specific. I mean, look, I've been a champion for South King County for a long time. I think, one, that based on our population and based on our needs, that's how the allocation is now structured. So we will get more money, right? Seattle has been in existence for forever. They have money, but they have a very large population. I think we come out pretty well in South King County with the adjustments of being designated as an opportunity area. I think 55 million is nothing to, I'll just say 20 years ago, it was a debate. It was a heated debate. And so for us to get an allocation of 55 million for a trail with full acknowledgement, we're fully built out, it's going to be more complicated, but I think that is a significant investment. I would say that the, between the additional grants, so I talked a little bit about it. So let's say the 2.4, the 3 million for projects, but then there's a bunch of money for grants. 13.5 million for grants, which South King County is eligible for, and I would encourage you, and I would champion on your behalf because I have that lived experience of being in South King County. So, and then I really think that equity in opportunity areas puts South King County in a better and stronger place to compete for dollars. So I, there's a regional need. And honestly, the county is the kind of, I look at it as like the backbone of kind of conservation and parks and open space. There's also CFT dollars, which I think specifically benefits South King County based on some of the work that I did actually as a, as a councilmember for Conservation Futures Tax Funds, and I believe Des Moines has been a recipient. And Seattle also contributes, like all of us, a significant portion of their dollars as well. So I, not just because it's my, because I'm the district rep this year, but I think South King County has come out way better than historically in the past. And a lot of that is data, information, your voices, residents. I think they're starting to get the message around the investments. And we are one region, and there are dollars that will probably no longer be available. So partnering regionally and as cities is going to be really key to keep what we have.
Thank you, that's a great answer.
I'm going to start with Councilmember Grace Matsui and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here and coming in person to talk to us about this proposed levy. It sounds like there's been a great deal of consideration between the one presented by, the proposal presented by the executive, and a lot of deliberation went into these changes proposed by the council. So thank you for looking out for our residents in District Five. I really very much appreciate that. I'm wondering if you, and it may be far too late probably for this round, and I am excited to hear about the opportunity zone and where those extra dollars might go to folks that are in our locations that have a greater need. I'm wondering if there could be other enhancements for municipalities that don't have a metro parks district, parks and recreation district? So you can probably see where this is going because other cities in our area have their own levies and they pay, the citizens have paid into funds that they can use directly for their city. And I'll look to colleagues here who have more longevity than I do, but I believe the last time we put this to a vote had failed. And so we don't have a metro parks district here, and we don't have our own dollars going into specifically in a levy form into ongoing funds for maintenance of parks and recreation.
I think that's a great point, and I'll just talk from experience, and it's too bad Gene isn't here because years ago, he was very vocal in Tucuilla to form Metropolitan Parks District. And as you all know, it used to be you can fund everything through general fund dollars. And forming an MPD allows you to be a single-issue voter. So I'd be happy to bring that consideration as a criteria. It probably, it is too late probably for this round, but I think when it comes to the parks levies, so Parks proposed a 60-40 split because they thought, based on the information that they heard from jurisdictions, this would be a better outcome. Then the council got a hold of it and said, we can actually make that stronger if you really want to achieve equity. I say that to say that every iteration, parks gets better. And I think residents become kind of clearer and clearer about, oh, and about what their needs are. But as it relates to no MPD, you would still be eligible for the granting program for ballfields. I wish I had the key pieces. And maybe for some open space dollars as well. So you're still, as a city, you're still eligible for operation and maintenance dollars, but let's call them grant opportunities that have to be applied for. There are some qualifications, but it's not limited to MPDs.
Exactly. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I just want to take into consideration that there are many jurisdictions who have the second pot of money that they can go to, and we do not. They have their own levy, their own parks metropolitan district that they can go to, and they can access these county dollars, and we can only access the county. And there may be other jurisdictions who are in the same position, that it would be wonderful if they had that enhancement as well.
I'm happy to bring that forward.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I don't want to just gild the lily, but thank you. This is just short and rhetorical. Anything that can be done to automate the allocation for Des Moines, I think, you know, it's, because, I mean, your predecessor struggled mightily to obtain, to, you know, to try to rebalance and provide more opportunities. It's tough setting up nonprofits here. And I think part of the perception of the rich getting richer and so on just comes down to the fact, you could mitigate that if you simply assign a percentage to our city, and it would just simplify a lot of stuff, and I'm done. Thank you. Thank you.
I would agree. And going back to the Seattle scenario, there might be a little fight about the percentages then, right? It's like, well, we have this much population. But I think we're going to get as close as we can, at least I'll push for it. And there's also specific grant dollars that each council office has, so that's also an option. So I'm a huge champion of parks and open space, and this year is very critical. So I wanted to at least offer my voice to give you the most recent information. We're happy to give you detailed information. I called Mayor Buxton and said, hey, I'm here, because we've worked really well together in the past, and said, look, I want to be a representative of District Five. So I'm kind of old school that way. I have a job to do on behalf of District Five, and this is the process, and we'll keep fighting for our region, South King County. Thank you.
Jeremy, did you have a question? Just checking with you.
No, Mayor, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
So I do have just a couple of questions, DeShawn. So the, when you talked about it went down to 23.5, wasn't, is it, the original, the original ask was 24 cents?
24.
So, and now with the revision, it's 23.5?
Yeah.
The levy that's in existence right now is 18, right? 19. So, okay. And then a question in regard to the allocation to Stephen Jay. That looked like it was under a category of ballfields. For example, what, we've got a park that we think would be, would be a great recipient of funds, additional funds, you know, it's in a underprivileged community, and, but we're concerned about our federal funding earmarks. And so if that doesn't come through, and this goes through the way that you've got this earmark, would there be a way to take that 3 million and apply it to a different park? Or does it have to be ballfields and re-turf?
I think it's specifically called out.
Ballfields and...
Yeah, but I think there's still time to rename it before the final, if that...
I see.
But I don't think that that is a real barrier because the request kind of came from District Five, so I can make the adjustment, and we could also adjust it in the budget process as well. So be very specific.
So we would need to send that request right away if we wanted a specific earmark that was more flexible?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We could take a look at that, but...
Yeah.
Okay, if there are, we are going to discuss later on in the meeting how to respond to this, whether we're going to write or not, or whatever. But thank you so much for your time, councilmember.
Thank you for your questions, and thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. So next up, so now we're moving on to general public comment, and I do want to make, Jeff, I believe you're part of a presentation a little bit further down, so I'm gonna, I'm not going to call on you for this, and public comment. So, so first up, I have Annie Pansky.
Good evening, councilmembers. I have my comments on my phone, so I'll be looking down and reading. But my name is Annie Pansky, and I am from Des Moines, and this is my husband, Josh Pansky. We live in the North Woodmont Beach area, and we're here to discuss the ordinance for short-term home amenity rentals. We operate the Yacht Club, which is a private pool experience in our yard, and we're hoping to transition to Sisuhus, which would be a Scandinavian-style family spa. When we opened the space, our goal wasn't to create an experience, it was to share what we had, to bring our community together, and to build a sense of community around our family. Over the past few years, we've welcomed neighbors, our school groups, our families, friends, church, and enjoy it responsibly as well as respectfully. Since posting about Ordinance 25001 this week, we've received over 40 new petition signatures overnight asking for us to be able to operate in the city of Des Moines, along with dozens of heartfelt comments from neighbors. People have shared how much they value... People have shared how much they value the space with comments like, "You provide an incredible service to the community, and we hope that the city can see that. And you've made such a valuable space for our neighborhood." It's been incredibly meaningful to hear directly from these people who use and care about our space. We submitted a letter with more detail, but I'd like to highlight just a few key concerns about, and a constructive proposal for the amenity rental license. First proposal would be the sound limit of 55 dB A is below our neighborhood's natural ambient noise. Our minute monitor shows that even with no one outside, our yard averages 66 dB A due to location under the flight path, as well as between two busy roads. Second, occupancy of limit to just six guests based on the number of bedrooms in our home and us being a family of six. It's not about our outdoor space, available parking, or our actual impact. So we do have off-street parking for nine cars, and we monitored the noise in real time, as well as proactively manage the space. We're not asking for special treatment, we're asking for a framework that reflects real-world behavior, not assumptions. We propose a strike-based accountability model. If a property receives three verified complaints from three different neighbors for the same issue, within six months, it gets a strike. After three strikes in a year, permit is revoked. This ensures that no single neighbor has undue influence while still giving the city tools to deal with real problems. We're hopeful to transition fully to Sisuhus with the passing of a reasonable amenity ordinance, one that protects neighborhoods while still allowing responsible, community-minded hosts to operate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Kim Richmond.
I live right next door to the folks you just heard from. We've lived in Des Moines for 30 years now, at our current residence for 23. My husband and I have raised two kids in the Federal Way and Highline School Districts. One of them is right here with me. I've donated hundreds of my personal hours, unpaid volunteer hours for church, schools, farmers' market. I started the community garden here. I'm here to say that I oppose allowing rental swimming pools to operate in my neighborhood under the new proposed code. You've heard from the other operators of this business. I want to share what it's been like living next to them for the past five years. First, there's a safety concern. Twelve-year-old child almost died last year in July, was found at the bottom of the pool from first responders. There's no lifeguard at the pool, there's no health department oversight or regulations, similar to what Mount Rainier Community Pool has. Then there's the noise. It's like living next door to an outdoor Chuck E. Cheese's, or pop-up elementary school where it's always recess. When one group of partiers has yelled and played themselves horse with chanting and Marco Polo, eaten, sung "Happy Birthday," melted down because they now had to go home, and set off their car alarms and then departed, the next group arrives. There can be 40 people or more in the pool, three, four, five times a day, on the weekends, in the summer, year-round as well. We have environmental concerns. I used to be outside gardening evenings and weekends after work. Now we have to keep our windows closed, and I have to schedule my yard work around the smoke from their outdoor fireplace. Finally, I'm so disappointed in the false narrative being pushed by these operators. They've told you that all the neighbors love us, and nobody has complained. This is simply not true. They pushed out the neighbor across the street, Joshua Potter. I know this because he wrote me just before he sold, and sent me copies of his correspondence and complaints to the city. The day we told the pool operators we did not support the pool business, they started treating us as their enemies. After 23 years living here, 18 of which we had no problem with any of our nine direct neighbors, we have felt bullied and harassed to leave. Publicly available records include substantial complaints, fines for operating without a license, and form letters of support signed by their customers, who may or may not even live in Des Moines, much less the immediate neighborhood, much less next door. I live next door to this pool, and I can tell you that the sparkle wore off pretty fast in the face of health, safety, traffic, and noise issues. We don't love them, and we hope the city will listen to our concerns when reviewing applications under the Short Term Rentals and Amenities Code. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ellie Richmond.
My name is Ellie Elizabeth Richmond. I live in Des Moines. You just heard from my mom. I'm here because I live next to the short-term amenity rental pool. My mom just presented to tell you why we have problems with our neighbors who operate this rental pool. I'm here to tell you why we don't need rental pools in Des Moines. Firstly, like my mom and many people I know, I have safety concerns about this type of business. They don't have lifeguards, they sell alcohol, and they create environmental pollutants. But most importantly, they don't have to report anything to the Health Department of King County. This means they don't have to test their water for dangerous chemicals, excess chlorine, or fecal matter. They also don't have to report any drowning incidents, illness, or death to the county health department, which means if you rent from them, you have no way of knowing if their pool has dangerous chemicals or fecal matter in it, or if a child in the prior party almost drowned in the pool. I would invite them to share all this, all of this information freely with their community, but without county oversight, there is no way to know if their information would be correct. For instance, when we confronted one of our neighbor operators about the drowning event last year at the Yacht Club, she said, quote, "I don't know anything about that," and this was after the incident, of course. So either she was ignorant of a major medical crisis that happened on her property, or she was lying to her neighbors. I have the whole incident on video, and it disturbs me. All of this concerns me, especially because I have worked with children, and I know how important their safety is. The operators of the Yacht Club pool will tell you they've installed systems that alert people when someone is drowning in their pool, but that doesn't guarantee that someone will be there to pull that child out of the water. As drowning is the leading cause of death for children aged one to four years old, I would suggest that we need to think carefully as to whether this type of business should be allowed to operate in Des Moines. We don't need private short-term rental pools in Des Moines. We have Mount Rainier Pool. It's a public pool with lifeguards, and you can rent it for birthday parties, like my parents did for me when I was a kid. I learned how to swim at our real community pool, Mount Rainier, and I think it's an invaluable asset for all of us. It also values the safety of children. Mount Rainier also has to report to the Health Department, and is open to the community in a way that the Yacht Club pool can never be. We don't need rental pools when we have something better, something more accessible. I want to thank everybody for listening to what I have to say, and I am glad to see code is being written for short-term rental properties, and especially given that it is such a burden on me, I am glad to see that this is being addressed by the city and by the city council. And I would like to thank everybody for being here and listening to me again. I would just ask that private pool rentals be excluded from the code and not allowed to operate in Des Moines. I don't think there is a place in our code for these types of businesses. Most of all, I hope the city listens to what I have to say, because the future safety of our community depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Next up, Batina Carey.
Good evening, everyone, and council and residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of the Marina District, and I'm here to express a strong support for the proposed partnership between the City of Des Moines and the Rotary of Des Moines, and the, also the Poverty Bay Blues Brews, Blues and Brews Fest. Whoa, that's a mouthful. This festival now, in its 16th year, has become a cornerstone event for our community, attracting between 800 to 1,200 attendees annually. These visitors contribute significantly to our community, the shopping at our local stores, utilizing services, including our parking. And I believe that this event enhances the visibility of Des Moines Beach Park as a premier venue, potentially leading to increased future rentals and tourism. Beyond its economic impact, the festival serves as the primary fundraiser for the Rotary Club, which reinvests 100% of the net proceeds into vital community programs. These initiatives include providing the musical instruments, they're going to be talking about this later on after me, but the proposed partnership involving the $10,000 in-kind contribution from the city for park rental is a strategic investment, and I would support that, the council vote yes on that. I urge the city council to approve this partnership proposal, recognizing the substantial benefits it offers to our community's cultural and economic vitality. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. One other question, is there anybody who came to the meeting tonight expecting to give public comment and speak from the podium and did not realize that you needed to sign in order to do so? All right. Pass that back to you. Okay. So that is all with our comments from the public for now. And next up, we have committee chair reports, and I'm going to pass the baton to Chair Nutting for a report out on the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a short, brief presentation about the Sound Code decision that was brought forth almost a year ago to be remanded to a committee. We're going to receive a little bit more information from staff. We were kind of split, if you will, in the meeting on whether to bring back some sort of code for that. We also had the discussion on the short-term rental. I think staff got the direction they needed to, to move forward with putting together an ordinance. We heard testimony, not testimony, we heard, we heard from several residents, residents tonight during comments from the public, which I'm sure will alter some of that. And then our long-term financial plan and development impact analysis, we directed staff to move forward with some, some sort of study to help us decide on zoning areas that we're potentially losing financial revenue on, and that we have zoned possibly different than what highest and best use could be. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair. Next up, we move to the city manager's report. I'm going to hand the baton to City Manager Catherine Caffrey.
Mayor and council, we have three items tonight, and so if Claire will give me just a minute, or they can start heading on up, she'll be our first speaker representing South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. I wanted to take a moment to give the council and the community an update on animal control. There's been a lot of discussion, both online, I've gotten a handful of emails, I know you all have too, and so I wanted to provide an update on that. You all may recall that as part of the budget process, one of the many hard decisions the council made was to greatly reduce the level of service for animal control. And so we do still have animal control through Burian Cares, but it is very, very limited. So we unfortunately are no longer able to assist with lost pets, so it's really kind of dangerous dog situations or neglect that meets kind of the criminal standard that we're able to provide services. We do have on the books a requirement for pet licensing fees here in the community, where if you have a pet, you should, you should have a pet license to, to register your animal. I think that has been a really underutilized program that we just really have not been leveraging, advertising, or really getting the word out there. And so right now, we are exploring, going with a contractor, it's a national company that does this all over, who really specializes in pet licensing fees, getting the word out to the community, making it super easy for people to sign up and register their pets, making renewal easy, and then using those proceeds to really fund, potentially returning to kind of greater animal control services. Now, I want to be clear that we are in the early stages of this. We still need to figure out really, you know, how much revenue would that be, how long would it take to build up the funds to potentially return those services? But I did want to share with you all in the community that we are actively working to find a revenue stream that can make returning that service possible. It will take a little while, but we, like I said, are actively working on that because I know it's been really important to the community. So my, unless there's any questions on that. My second item is Claire, and so I will let her take it away. There is an item later on the agenda regarding this as well. So I'll ask Claire to go through her presentation, and then if you don't mind when we're done, we'll see if there are any questions from the council for item four on consent while Claire's still here.
Thank you. So, good evening, for the record. My name is Claire Goodwin, and I am the Executive Manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip for short. Thank you for having me this, here this evening, and I am excited to present to you the Skip Executive Board's 2024 Recommendation on the Use of Housing Capital Funds, which your city contributes to. And this is a formality per our inter-local agreement requirements, and so even though your city has contributed funds to the Housing Capital Fund, your council will need to take action for us to spend those funds. So thank you. And, next slide, all right. So for those that are new to our work, Skip is your subregional affordable housing consortium made up of 11 South King County cities, plus King County, and your city included as well. We are a unified, coordinated, and collaborative coalition, funding the construction and preservation of affordable housing right here in South King County. This is a meaningful opportunity to pool funds together with neighboring cities to collaboratively make an impact on the subregion's affordable housing shortage. And to date, we have pooled over $11.2 million to house our low-income neighbors or rehabilitate deteriorating multifamily buildings. Skip pools substitute House Bill 1406 funds, House Bill 1590 funds, and general funds from the 11 cities listed on your slide. In 2019, substitute House Bill 1406 became law, allowing cities and counties to recapture a portion of Washington State sales tax when it's used to support affordable housing initiatives. In 2020, House Bill 1590 became law, allowing jurisdictions to impose a 1/10 of 1% local sales and use tax to support affordable housing, behavioral health facilities, and related supportive services. Cities had a limited window to act and retain those revenues before the county collected that revenue. Only four South King County cities collect it. Yours unfortunately does not, but we pool those funds from other cities, along with the substitute, the substitute House Bill 1406 funds and any general funds for our annual funding round for the Housing Capital Fund. And use of these pooled funds, as mentioned in the introduction, requires approval from each participating city council. Even though you have already contributed these funds to Skip, your council will need to authorize the allocation of those funds to specific projects. So this approach allows multiple cities to pool their funds for projects across South King County, to maximize the creation of affordable housing overall and in each city. So six projects applied to Skip funding throughout South King County. The Skip Advisory Board reviewed and made recommendations to the Skip Executive Board to fund four of the six projects. The two remaining projects were both located in the city of Renton, and both were eligible to use House Bill 1590 funds, which the city of Renton collects but does not pool with Skip. So because of this, the city of Renton plans to directly financially support those two projects. And after careful deliberation, the Skip Executive Board concurred with the Skip Advisory Board's recommendation to fund four projects totaling $4.1 million, with the breakdown by funding source listed on your slide and described in your agenda packet under the Skip Executive Board memo dated January 23, 2025. Per the requirements of our inter-local agreement, we are seeking concurrence from you on this So the Skip Executive Board recommends the four projects listed on your slide, and I will briefly go through each one. So Mercy Housing Northwest Burian Family Housing in Burian is a 91-unit new construction multifamily rental development located on property donated by Mary's Place that operates an emergency shelter next door and is in the process of developing a new shelter to replace the existing one. The project will support households earning between 30% area median income, or AMI, and 60% AMI, and includes set-asides for families with children exiting homelessness and households with a physical disability. $2 million is recommended by the board. $2 million is recommended by the board. This project was the recipient of a S K I P award during the 2022 funding round, and the recommended amount will be added to the previous award. Second is T W G's Pandian at Star Lake, which is in Kent, adjacent to the Kent-Star Lake Link Light Rail Station. The project is a 251-unit multifamily mixed-use rental project, which will support households earning between 30% and 80% AMI, with set-asides for families and families with children that require permanent supportive services or are at risk of homelessness. $770,000 is recommended by the board. This project was also the recipient of a prior S K I P award from the 2023 funding round, and this amount will be added to the previous award. Third is the multi-service center's White River Apartments located in Auburn. It's a 24-unit rehabilitation and preservation project supporting households earning between 30% AMI and 60% AMI. $775,000 was recommended by the board. Lastly, Habitat for Humanity's Burian Miller Creek is another previously awarded S K I P project. It's a 40-unit affordable homeownership project in Burian, with 20 units being sold to households earning an average of 50% AMI, and 20 units supporting households up to 80% AMI. $555,000 is recommended by the board. So this slide shows total amounts sourced from House Bill 1590 contributed by jurisdiction this funding round to the S K I P Housing Capital Fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for each project. You'll see a similar breakdown for the substitute House Bill 1406 funds on the next slide. The first two projects we discussed are being funded through House Bill 1590 funds pooled by the cities of Covington, Kent, and Maple Valley. So this slide shows total amounts sourced from substitute House Bill 1406 contributed by jurisdiction this funding round to the S K I P Housing Capital Fund, and of this total, the amounts by jurisdiction for the rehabilitation project in Auburn and the homeownership project in Burian. You will also see the unallocated amount by jurisdiction to be used in future funding years, and the amount that was carried over from 2023, on those far-right columns there. So we are seeking authorization from city council to allocate the amount for these projects under your city in alignment with the Executive Board's recommendation. This is $29,955 for the multi-service center's White River Apartments Rehabilitation and Preservation Project, and $9,856 for the Habitat for Humanity Burian Miller Creek Project. This slide shows total amounts sourced from general funds contributed by jurisdiction and the amount proposed to be allocated to the Burian Miller Creek Homeownership Project. C-TAC was the only jurisdiction to contribute unrestricted general funds, but we are always open to other cities who may be interested in pooling those for the Housing Capital Fund. And in conclusion, I am seeking your support to authorize the allocation of $39,811 from the city's contribution to the S K I P Housing, Housing Capital Fund to finance the affordable housing projects we talked about tonight per our inter-local agreement requirements. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Councilmember Harris.
Colleagues, I just wanted to mention that S K I P has graciously offered a chance for me and Councilmember Oxiger to review their inventory of homes. And I've been anxious to see that for a couple of years. If you'd also like to be part of that session, please let me know. Thank you. The only question I have, and I'm sorry, I'm old and forgetful, was, I believe there was originally sort of a mandate towards obtaining funds either at the state level or some other kind of capital fundraising thing outside of the participants? If I forgot, that's, you know, how's that going?
So originally, there was an interest at the S K I P Board to create like a 501(c)(3) fundraising arm of the organization, and we've put that on hold for now, given limitations on staff capacity and the cost of maintaining a nonprofit in existence. And so we are talking about it right now in our five-year planning process to see if that's something that the board would like to pursue.
Okay, no, I just, just wanted to make sure I wasn't hallucinating, and just, my interest in it is that this is fabulous, don't ever take it, but, you know, at some point, there needs to be a bigger pot of money. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember Nutting, did you have a question? Just checking.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, it looks like that's it, Claire. Doesn't look like there's any further questions. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Next up, I'm going to invite our Finance Director, Jeff Friend. We are going to be having a presentation from the State Auditor's Office, which is more exciting than it sounds. But I do want to give a big kudos to Jeff for a really successful audit this year, and we wanted to have the state share with you briefly and the public their findings. So Jeff, you want to take it away?
Normally, I don't say it's a pleasure to work with auditors. However, our presenter tonight for the State Auditor's Office is Marcus Nelson, who has been our auditor the last two years. And he's basically what you hope your auditor is going to be, which is fair and reasonable, because you're never going to have a perfect audit where you have no issues whatsoever. And then I also want to point out, too, with the, this audit is the 2023 Financial Statements Audit, but there's actually two audits. There's an audit of the financial statements, and also an audit called an accountability audit, which is make sure that we're in compliance with, you know, state law regulations and our own code. And then lastly, it was a good result of the audit, and I think Eric Mandelis, our Financial Operations Manager, it was his first time working on financial statements, and he was the audit liaison. And he's just an example of the talent we have in the Finance Department. He just did an outstanding job, and, which led to a clean audit, so. And then I guess Marcus can take it away.
Marcus, I think you are unmute, or we can't hear you.
While Marcus sorts out his volume, I wonder if he's using headphones or something. I can go ahead and kind of kick us off. And so my name is Paul Griswold, I am the Audit Manager for our South King County team. And so I'm pleased to share the results of the City of Des Moines Audit to the full council. So we presented the results a couple of weeks ago, but pleased to share the results again. And so before we do get started, you should have received an exit packet a couple of weeks ago, and that includes the draft report. And so the PowerPoint that we're about to present basically covers everything that we plan on presenting. So, and we will open it up for questions at the end of the, the presentation. So, so with that, we can get our presentation started. Marcus, if you want to check your mic and see if maybe you're working, is it working now?
Yeah.
Yep.
It was the headphones.
Thank you, Paul. All right, you want to go to the next slide? So one of the most important things about audits is their role to increase trust in government, and so our audits are able to do that because the public trusts the state auditor as an independent organization that provides transparent examinations of the operations of all state local governments. And then another important role of the audits is their ability to identify areas where efficiencies can be improved and where you can be more effective in complying with requirements. Audits can also tell you where you're already working efficiently and effectively, and so our goal today really is just to make sure you understand the results of your audit and then answer any questions that you may have. And so with that, I will turn it over to Marcus, who's going to go into more detail about the results of the audit. Yeah, thank you, Paul. All right, so we performed an accountability audit. As Jeff mentioned earlier, our audit scope was fiscal year 2023. So in the audit report that was published and is now available on our website, we, we deliver the results of the various areas that we reviewed, and those are also listed in the report itself. So on page seven of the exit packet handout that was provided previously, you'll notice on that page, it's, it'll state that in those selected areas, city operations complied in all material respects with applicable state laws, regulations, and its own policies, and provided adequate controls over the safeguarding of public resources. Now, we don't examine every transaction or every area, so for the areas that we did not review, we don't provide any results on those areas that were not examined. So, these are the areas that we reviewed. So during our planning phase, we perform analytical procedures, we inquire with members of the city, and we use a risk-based approach to narrow it down to the various areas that we looked at. So now I'm going to run through the different accountability areas that we looked at and a little bit of what we did. So for accounts payable, we looked at electronic funds transfers, general dispersments, and gift card purchases. So for these expenditures, we were looking at if they were supported, if they were for allowable business uses, and if they were approved through the proper channels. For tracking and monitoring of sensitive assets such as computers, tools, and equipment, we gained an understanding of the city's process for tracking and monitoring those items. And then we also performed our own onsite asset check. For procurement, we looked at public works projects, as well as some purchases that were made, and just ensured that the city was in compliance with any bidding and procurement requirements. For payroll, we sampled some of the employees and ensured that their gross wages were accurate as well as supported. For financial condition, we're reviewing for any indicators of financial distress. And for open public meetings, we look at compliance with the meeting minutes, the meetings themselves, as well as the executive session requirements. And I would like to add that the financial condition in the open public meetings areas are areas that we do review for all of our entity types. So in the audit report as well, it's not fully included, but it is referenced. So on page 12 of the exit packet, you'll see there, we did issue a management letter. This is related to the external cyber loss that occurred in the city. So you'll notice in the letter itself, the first two paragraphs speak to the importance of cybersecurity. I know our office has seen an uptick in, in cyber attacks in recent years. So just, it explains the importance of those and, and the importance of monitoring that, those sort of things. In the next two paragraphs, it talks a little bit about the issue that had occurred. And I would like to add that it does include that all of the funds were recovered by the city, so there was in fact no loss overall. And then further on down, it lists the various recommendations that we provided to the city. So we did recommend that they develop written procedures to verify banking information, and strengthen internal controls to ensure employees are following the verification process, and provide training and communication for verifying those requirements. And I would like to add that the city has already implemented some of those measures in reaction to the cyber attack that had occurred. Next, I will go over the financial statement audit results. The results of that can be found on page 19 of that exit packet. So there you will see we issued an unmodified opinion, which means a clean audit overall. So our opinion is issued in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting, which is the B A R S manual, that is issued by our office, since the city reports on a cash basis. We also issued an adverse opinion in regards to U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. So that just means that the city reports cash, and we have to provide that opinion as well. Now, this is very common, there's a lot of cities that report cash basis. We also issue an adverse opinion for our school districts, since they don't report under GAAP as well. And part of our financial statement audits, we do look at internal controls. I am happy to say that we reported no significant deficiencies in internal control in relation to the financial statement preparation. We identified no deficiencies that we would be considered material weaknesses, and we noted no instances of noncompliance that would be material to the city's financial statements. So some required communications, we did not identify any material misstatements during the audit, and any uncorrected misstatements have been provided in that exit packet. I would like to mention that they were just presentation and classification type of misstatement, so nothing that we would include in our audit report. Another item that is included in the audit report, so during the fiscal '22 audit, we did issue a finding. So anytime we issue a finding on the following audit, we look at what is, any, if there has been any corrective action that has taken place. So we do include what we call a summary schedule of prior audit findings. So as you can see on that page, it is noted that, that is no longer valid. So since the city continues to report on a cash basis, the prior audit issue is, is no longer valid, and it will not be a, an issue moving forward. And then another area that we do include into our financial audit is what we call management override of controls. So we look at any year-end journal entries or adjustments that are made by management, and I'm happy to report that management did not circumvent any of their normal processes in that regard. So we also performed an attestation audit in lieu of a federal single audit. And so that was focused on the city's coronavirus state and local recovery funds. You might know them as ARPA funds. So in that report, we did issue an opinion on the city's compliance with those specified requirements. And we looked at the expenditures related to those funds and made sure that they were allowable to the program. So I believe that report is on page 35 of the handout. You'll notice the results, it'll state that the city complied in all material respects with those requirements. And just to give you a quick idea, that in 2023, the city spent around $1.3 million of those ARPA funds, which made up roughly about 88% of the total federal expenditures for that fiscal year. So we did examine quite a bit of the federal dollars. And I'd like to extend a huge thank you to the city for allowing us to work on site. I was able to, to come up onsite for two days a week, and that really helps us be more efficient in our process. I have direct access to staff if I have questions, or gathering documentation that helps us move along with the audits. And I'd also like to shout out and thank specifically Eric Mandelis, the Financial Operations Manager, as well as Jeff Friend, the Finance Director. They made themselves available throughout the entire process to answer questions and help provide audit documentation very timely, so just ensures efficiency in what we do, and really appreciative of them. And with that, we will open it up for any questions.
Any questions from the council? All right.
I'm sorry. So this is the same question I asked online, it's hopefully a softball. The public will, will ask, you know, when do we get closer to a more real-time, like within 12 months kind of, and, yeah, how close are we to that?
I can go ahead and answer that. So we, so like mentioned, this was the 2023 audit, which we wrapped up basically in March of 2025. And so our goal is to always issue the prior year audits by the December 31 of
And so our goal is to always issue the prior year audits by the December 31st of the following year. And so this, so this audit cycle, we will basically, we'll start this audit in the fall of 2025 to cover 2024, to issue before 12/31/2025. And so that's, that's our goal. We are on track to continue to make progress in audit timeliness. And so that's, that's, that's the goal, and I believe we're going to make it. And so, yeah.
But it's nothing we're, we're not slowing up progress. This is just something the state is working through post-COVID and so on.
And Marcus can probably speak to any specifics that, that he can speak to about the specific audit. But yeah, we have been working our way through some backlog of audits, especially related to all that ARPA funding. So a lot of entities that never received single audits, received single audits. So, but we are slowly catching up. But yeah, I don't believe it was anything that the city did that basically caused us to get issued in March, other than us just, yeah, starting the audit, I think, in November of 2024.
Thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you, Marcus and Paul, for going through that. I know everybody was on the edge of their seat. I know I was. But thank you again for doing that tonight for us. So Mayor, that concludes my city manager report.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, regulating use of the Redondo Boat Launch. Item four, South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership Funding Allocation Approval. Item five, Public Works Engineering Building Basement HVAC System Upgrade. Item six, Seattle of Des Moines Right-of-Way Procurement Staffing Update. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
So moved. I didn't hear. Nobody's got their mics on.
Thank you. I appreciate the, I was chewing on candy. I didn't want it to be broadcast. So, so you have the motion, council member, and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz has the second. Is, is there an item that a council member wishes to pull? All right. So take it to the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's unanimous, 6-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, the first item up in new business is a presentation and discussion of the Poverty Bay Blues and Brews Contract. So I'm going to pass the baton again over to City Manager Catherine Cafrey and invite Rotary up for a presentation.
Great. I am going to go through a couple of things real quick, and then we'll turn it over to Jeff. Okay. Council, you saw in your packet sort of the write-up, but I wanted to highlight just a couple of items. Okay. So again, as the packet said, this is the 16th Annual Blues and Brews Event, which I agree with Bettina is definitely a mouthful. I have not had the opportunity to attend this event before, but I hear it is quite the gathering in the summertime. Average attendance is between $1,200 and $1,500 people, excuse me. And what's before you tonight is a proposal that Rotary approached us with for a three-year partnership between the city and Rotary for this. And so I want to walk you through what is in there and how it compares to prior years. So in prior years, Rotary has gone through the process of asking for what is, you know, considered the facility discount policy, that various nonprofits can get different types of discounts on the use of city facilities. This year, the proposal is a little different. It is multi-year. The terms up there, though, are just for one year, the dollar amounts. And it was really more of a partnership. And so in our early conversations with Rotary, we talked about how important it is to really show that this is something that together the city and Rotary are doing together. So I want to briefly highlight a few things. They are requesting an in-kind discount of $10,000 towards the beach park. So they would be paying $2,440 for the beach park for the use of it on that one Saturday. There's also a deposit they put in that's refundable, so I'm not including that in here, assuming, you know, our friends at Rotary won't trash the place, and so they'll get their deposit back. All right. Well, we may have to revisit that. And then they've also offered to commit $2,000 per year earmarked for Parks and Rec Youth Scholarships. So it's a combination of a little under $4,500. Something that's unique, unlike prior years, you'll see on that chart, is that in prior years, my understanding is the beach park was closed Friday through Sunday from any other rentals. So, you know, they were maybe doing setup on Friday, cleanup on Sunday. This year, the Rotary volunteers will be up very, very early. So they will be doing setup and cleanup on Saturday, which actually has allowed us to rent out the park Friday evening. And it is booked for a wedding Friday evening. And so that is additional revenue for that rental that in years past we have not gotten, because those days were not available. So that's, that's positive, and we appreciate Rotary willing to accommodate that schedule. They have proposed having the city be what they're calling a center stage sponsor. It really kind of identifies and puts some meat on really what does it mean to recognize the city as a sponsor. I'm sure Jeff will go through it, but sort of how they would feature the city's logo, how they would recognize the city as a sponsor. They've also included 40 general admission tickets to be used at the city's discretion. It's my understanding in the past that the city cannot accept those. But we could use them for the public. So we could, you know, do some type of contest, or perhaps share them with board members, or I don't know how. But I know that the city themselves cannot accept it, but we can use those elsewhere if you wanted to. There's also a speaking opportunity for the mayor or a council member. And something that we haven't done in the past that I think is a great opportunity for us this year is to have a promotional booth at the event for us to market our rental facility. So as I said, there will be a little over 1,000 people there. As you all know, the beach park is a rentable property, and I think we're missing an opportunity to not promote that facility as a place to be rented out. And so Rotary is graciously giving us a booth to really feature how, you know, people who are there enjoying it that day can actually rent out the facility in the future. Some other things that they mentioned that I think are, you know, valuable to me as a city staff person is we talked about Rotary and the city working together to share city information through Rotary's newsletters. As you know, we continue to work on really improving our communication from the city. So I was appreciative that Rotary was open to sort of, hey, when we have really important information we want to share, like the Budget Town Hall this summer or something like that. They've agreed to help us promote that through their channels. And then also, they have expressed an interest in kind of, you know, exploring, helping us with future events such as Burning Boat, which you all will recall. Unfortunately, we had to cancel this year due to staffing shortages. So I will take any extra set of hands I can get. So these are some of the items in there. And I think what I would also say, and I know you all will have a lot of conversation about the dollars on it, is because of the city's budget issues this year, unfortunately, the Parks and Rec Department is where we had to hit the hardest. So I do not have the staff or funding to put on events at the scale that perhaps the community would like. So really, the opportunity to work with an existing nonprofit who puts on things that the community enjoys and has things to do and appears to be a community tradition has a lot of value when we don't have the staff or resources to put that type of thing on. So, you know, from a staff perspective, we're excited to work with them on this event. I'm really excited to explore future opportunities to work with them for things that we, again, just don't have the resources internally to do. You'll see on that chart what their prior year's financial contributions look like. Again, the event rental fee that they are paying will cover the approximate staff costs. It'll cost us about $1,600 to have staff there that day at the facility. So those have been covered. I've gone through some of the other kind of items they've put in there as part of the partnership. And then I was asked prior to the, or since the packet was posted, to sort of look at alternatives. Like, because this proposal that came in is a partnership proposal, it's different from them just submitting through the facility discount policy. So I wanted to show you sort of what those differences are. So the top one shows you kind of what the proposed scenario is, the total rental amount, kind of market value, what it would be, what they are paying if they were to go under Resolution Number 1281, which is the discount policy. Again, that cost would be $12,440. And depending on what their rental reduction discount is, whether it be 20%, which is what I think the policy is, if you read it kind of verbatim, the last two years, they've gotten 75% discounts. So I put both of those numbers up there for you to see. And then, of course, the private scenario, right? If someone came in and rented it that day, they'd be paying $12,440. So that concludes my comments. I think, Jeff, do you want to do your presentation? And we can open up for questions? Great.
Thank you, Catherine.
I appreciate it. All right. Thank you very much. So my name is Jeff Gross. I'm the president of the Des Moines Normandy Park Rotary Club, and I'm also the Blues and Brews Festival co-chair, and I live in Des Moines. So thank you for the opportunity for us to share our partnership and sponsorship proposal. This presentation is just going to go over some of the key points. Catherine touched on a couple of those, but I think we'll fill in a little bit more detail on that. So our goal today is really to show the benefits of a partnership opportunity and how working together, we can accomplish the common goals. So we have many Rotarians with us here today, so I'd like them to raise their hand and smile, smiles, everybody. So, you know, Catherine mentioned about the force that we bring to bear. So we are roughly 50 Rotarians that are right at your disposal. So we're looking very much to partner with you. So our goals are aligned with your goals. We are both working hard to make Des Moines a great place to live, work, and play. We also want to meet the growing human service needs of our community that otherwise fall on the city or are just not met. Our service club exists to support the needs of our community. There are some of the causes and organization in Des Moines that we fund mostly annually. As many of you know, the needs of our city are growing, and we're trying to increase our fundraising to meet those needs. The Des Moines Food Bank alone has a 50% increase in use and needs this year. The Poverty Bay Blues and Brews Festival is our largest fundraiser. Our annual Rotary Club total fundraising budget, which includes all of our fundraising, is roughly $60,000. It fluctuates depending on the revenue from the Blues and Brews. The Blues and Brews Festival makes up 75% of the money needed to fund the programs we support. Last year with the rain, it was only 50%. We give 100% of the net proceeds in support of our programs. For your information, 100% of our groups, our clubs' operating expenses are funded through our dues. So everything that we make, that we raise money for, goes directly to the programs that we support. The event typically attracts 1,500 people. Our promotional campaign reaches over 6,000 people in 70 different zip codes. And 80% of the people on our mailing list are outside of Des Moines, so it's a great exposure. So with your partnership, this year, we hope that our 16th Annual Blues and Brews Festival will be a huge success. We feel the benefits of the city are numerous. Blues and Brews draws hundreds of visitors to Des Moines every year, exposes visitor all the businesses and amenities that this great city has to offer. Many who attend may never have a reason to come to Des Moines. It would also be interesting to see somebody who has come to our Blues Festival, seen the amenities, and then booked a wedding or an event. So this exposure is great. These visitors come back to our city and spend their dollars again and again. Unfortunately, daily tax receipts data is not available. But we know by bringing over 1,000 people into the town are likely to eat at Des Moines restaurants and visit the market, since our food offerings are limited at our Blues and Brews event. Not to mention the paid parking that greatly benefits from an event this size, of our size. So with your partnership and sponsorship, this Blues and Brews Festival can be a win-win for Rotary and the city. In our proposal, we invite the city to be the premier center stage sponsor for this Blues and Brews Festival. This proposal submitted, we believe, will maximize the city's benefits, which we'll talk about later in the presentation. Rotary will also contribute $2,000 for youth scholarships for the Des Moines Park and Rec Program each year of the sponsorship. With our sponsorship, we'll also provide space for the city to make contributions to our Rotary monthly newsletter and weekly announcements, and also anything that we can do on our social media. Additionally, and importantly, city sponsors, sponsorship will enable us to continue supporting our many human service projects benefiting Des Moines' childrens and families. The city's contribution would be $10,000 in kind towards rental of the beach property, and we're requesting a three-year sponsorship agreement to build city exposure. You know, we really want to promote this as your sponsorship. So just doing it one year, we feel this might not give it the total breadth of this. Also, the three-year also allows us to give more consistently over time. So over the years, we had about 40 sponsorships. These have been up from small to large businesses in our community and that are willing to write us a check to help us, help us in our causes every year, and we are truly grateful for them. Okay, the center stage. So a center stage is a premier sponsorship level. The city logo will be placed on all of our promotional materials, including billboard banners and posters. We'll include links to the city programs and at least 10 email blasts and social media posts. The city will also get exposure through multiple text blasts. Rotary will provide the four event tickets that we talked about that would be used at your discretion. On the day of the event, is an excellent opportunity for city officials to address the crowd multiple times throughout the day. During the event, the emcee will also announce the city as the premier sponsor. So we did some excellent mock-up here. So this will be the center stage. So there's huge banners on both sides of the stage that will make, that will promote the city as the premier. So we will give the city a prominent signage on the stage and provide booths and tables. So we're really looking at more than just one site for you to promote. So one would be towards the front of the event as people come in to promote the city and any activities, but also near the facilities. We want to give access, access to, to give you tours and beach rental facilities, including the dining hall and auditorium, is to have another area. Now, we realize that you don't have the people to man this, so we're willing to man it for you. So, you know, we could work out just what you want. We also thought maybe you might want to set some amenities inside of the facilities. So when you see a tour, they might see the tables set up and everything else. So we're all for promoting and making the facilities a success for you, and we have the people do it. We have a small army that shows up through all, through all of us, so we're more than happy to help with that. And we also want to promote the Park and Rec programs, so this gives you another opportunity to do that. Additionally, we think the partnership could lead to other ways of working together on other events, such as the Burning Boat. The club is very good at obtaining sponsorships, event planning, and getting volunteers. So we would really like to leverage our skill set on that and help the city with that. Through our partnership, we would put the full strength of the Rotary Club at your disposal to help make city events a great success. And then lastly, we're excited about the opportunity to partner with you, to accomplish the common goals, and continue to make Des Moines a great place to live. We need your partnership to continue to meet the human service needs of our community and to also feel, and we also feel that there's many benefits of being a partner and a sponsor to the city. Again, we would like to thank the council for your careful consideration of our proposal and look forward to your partnership and sponsorship for many years to come. We'll take any questions at this time.
What's the price of your ticket this year?
We haven't made the price of the ticket this year. Last year, what was it? Last year, what was early bird, do you remember? It was 45?
That was this.
Yeah, we had 45 last year, and then for early bird, and then, so yeah, it's $45 a ticket. So the 40 tickets are roughly $1,600 in value, and we can work that out with you if you want us to try auctioning them off or something. If you wanted more of the monetary value of that, we can talk about ways of doing that.
So we're trying to get to more of like a 50% type ratio. So my question would be to you, if we were to forego the 40 tickets, would you entertain the idea of the scholarships rising to $4,000? That would make it roughly about a 50%, 50/50 type of deal for the next three years? Would you consider something like that?
So I understand your question. Now, I don't, I can't answer that right now. I'd have to bring it back to the club, but we're more than happy to discuss that with you. So, you know, we're talking, you know, $10,000 in kind, and then we have a $2,000 commitment, and then you're recommending another $2,000.
I'm recommending is, it would be $8,000 in kind, per se, well, it would be 10,000, but it would be the 24/40 as you paid, but rather than $4,000 to, $4,000 to the scholarships, because there's more kids that can use them, and it would go back into Parks and Recreation. So the discount would only be technically 8,000.
Yes.
Still, the numbers are the same, they just shift buckets a little bit.
Yeah, Matt, I think we're.
But foregoing the price of the ticket, which is upwards of 1,600 and plus that you sell as additional tickets, that makes the crossover to make pretty close to the 2,000.
Yeah, so the tickets don't cost us anything, right? Because we're able to take up to 1,500 people, so there's really no value for the tickets for us.
So my question is, though, but giving us, say, you sell 1,460 tickets because you've given us 40.
Yeah.
The idea is they become available for sale. The idea here is that, when I did the math, that makes it about a 50/50. We're trying, we, under a financial situation and kind of reestablishing what we need to do, I think more of a 50/50 is a better proposal that, in discussion with a few of my colleagues, we seem to favor. So the question is, if you want to, if you go there, then I think you'd get a consensus you're looking for. So that's why I'm asking if you would be interested in that.
Yeah, I'd have to take that back, back, Matt.
And I understand that. I know you can't answer me today, but.
Yeah. So one of the things about promoting, one of the things that we really like about promoting the Parks and Recs, right? So we have an event on April 27th, just in a couple of weeks, that we're going to be making a donation from the proceeds to the Parks and Recs. So we really like to have, just whatever money that we do, we'd like to have it go towards the Parks and Recs, right? You know, so.
In this case, it does.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but one of the, and I'll take it back, I'll take it back. I just want you to understand that we're under such pressures for the profitability of this thing. So I reviewed the numbers. So last year, we made $30,000, and we got a $10,000, we have a $10,000 discount from you. So anything peeled off of that $10,000, if we have another poor time, might make it $25,000, right? So we're not making 50 or 60 or $100,000 an event. So I understand that, because it's really important for us, we want to stay at this facility, so I'm willing to bring it back to the board and entertain it. I just want to let you know the sensitivity that we have when it comes to our profitability of this.
So understanding that, obviously a rain event.
But I appreciate you.
Like we, you had last year, which it was a bummer, because you guys put on some good music. Would, would, would possibly, maybe we put some kind of a clause in there for inclement weather, where there's an attendance, and maybe it defaults to something like these numbers here? You know, obviously, we'd be willing to, if we could be willing to take a risk in that too, but I've seen, like, the first year out of COVID, you guys had a phenomenal event because nobody was having them, right?
Right.
And it brought in, and you did, it was a great event and brought a lot of revenue. So that's my point. We also are in those cost issues and expense issues and things like that. So what I'm trying to do is, this proposal's creative, it sets a precedent, so that's why I'm asking if you would consider those factors.
I would, and I appreciate you offering up the, you know, some backstop clause. Is there anything else? Yep, okay. All right, thank you, Matt, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Being creative on your side as well.
Thanks so much for being here tonight to talk to us about this potential sponsorship with the Rotary of Des Moines and Normandy Park. I think it's an awesome opportunity to more formalize a relationship that has been going on for quite some time between Parks and Recreation and the Blues and Brews Festival in particular. I am less concerned about earmarking money and having it go to specific events within Parks and Recreation, because all of your proceeds go back into youth and family events. And so while it's nice that it goes back into ours, we could also take those 40 tickets and give it to families in need so that they could participate in this as a recreation event. We are also not taking into consideration the thousands of dollars that we make in parking, and so, which is a new revenue that we weren't collecting back in 2021, I believe, when we first kicked off back again, or was that 2022? It was 2022. And so that figure is concrete, and it is revenue that the city gets in addition to this rental. And I believe we have specific figures on how much we made, which are not included in this proposal, but does add to the bottom line of the city in order to offset costs. So I'm not quite there that I think that we need to haggle over a proposal that's been presented to us. Of course, we will be voting on it, and that's one way of having that discussion. But I think that we really have that opportunity to work closer together, and that amount of money does have a significant impact on the amount that then goes directly back into our community and our families who are in need. So I think there are more ways that the city can look at increasing structural revenue rather than looking to claw back a couple of thousand dollars from a nonprofit organization. I want to say thanks again, and just, I'm hoping that we can capitalize on what will work best for all of us here and how we can solidify this partnership so that we both have an idea for the next three years of what your cost is going to be, what our donation is going to be, and it'll be settled for at least that three-year pilot, and we'll see how it goes. Now, I've had this conversation, and many of you know that I'm not really a huge proponent of one-off arrangements. I would rather have a policy that was applied, the same for all organizations that came in a similar ask and requirement. But I think that we're trying something new here, and it may turn into a future policy. So with that, I'm trying to have a more open mind, which is hard for me to do, but in this case, for you, I'm making it happen. Thank you.
This is where we were trying to, the notion of the sponsorship was to kind of break it away from the 201281. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, I want to say, really appreciate you coming to us with something, a proposal that I think is very sound. And, you know, I'm a big proponent of brews and blues, this is my kind of music. Furthermore, I've worked at the last three years at The Gate pouring beer, and I had a great time doing that. So it's a wonderful festival, even last year in the rain. You know, it turned out okay.
Great.
It did cut down on the ticket sales, but, you know, I understand that. But I think, I think the real good takeaway from this is that a local nonprofit is making a proposal to partner with the city, to work together to create something that could be sustainable, more sustainable long-term. And I think that's just an excellent idea. I mean, I do think the Parks and Rec scholarships are a really important piece of this, and I appreciate your proposal for that, because it was really, I mean, it was a place for my boys growing up to, you know, participate in a lot of the Parks and Rec stuff with everybody else in the community.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, the nice thing about it is, that is diversity, that is everybody sharing, we're all neighbors here, we're all learning how to play together on the same teams, and that's an invaluable lesson for kids. I do, you know, like the idea of maybe adding another 2,000 or something towards that, if it can be afforded, and what my proposal would be is to ask you to essentially negotiate or talk to, come to an agreement with the city manager about what that might look like with a clause that says if we have another rain out, that drops, you know, revenues below a certain amount, and so it's pretty well-defined, that, you know, certainly the second, the second tier of scholarships would not be. I think there's a way to work this through.
Yeah, appreciate that.
That would make sense for everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
But, you know, Blues and Brews is a great event, it does a lot for Des Moines, I think this gives us the opportunity to really promote Des Moines. I appreciate you coming to us with this proposal, so thank you all, thank you very much.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, yeah. Do most of, most of the people who buy tickets, they buy them online?
We have almost a third of our sales on the last week. So we do sell online, but people wait and see what the weather's going to be.
Yeah, yeah, I know. What I'm getting at is, and I'm going to get frowny faces, but I'm going to start with a positive.
Yeah.
It's a, because of the way my mind works, this is essentially a, is a leveraged grant. In other words, we give $10,000, and in exchange, you do four times the good work.
I don't.
Okay? I mean.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The thing is, my, we talk about making Des Moines a destination, okay? And I am trying to take that seriously. So anything that your organization can provide to track how our promotional effort is going is, should be a focus, and I would feel more comfortable with a one-year agreement, only because it has, we have, the event has been like for 16 years, and somehow, we need to track, like, real numbers, okay? What is repeat business? Who is new? We need to learn from these events. So it's not about the worthiness of your work. Somehow, our city has to create a laboratory to really, like, get more events here. Otherwise, it's just a one-off.
Understand.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
And so I'm trying to think about what, since you are one of the largest, if not largest gatherings, other than July the 4th. What tools can your group provide, just metrics, or what measurables can we get out of this that will help us?
Yeah, yeah.
With our, with our event planning.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, if we aren't, it's not about the money, I mean, you know, I mean, what do I just say? It's, but that, to me, it's more valuable to me to get some kind of metrics.
Yeah.
That we could use to, you know, do better with food truck coordination and, and with leveraging business throughout the city. So I don't think of it as a sponsorship, I think of it as a grant that leverages, you know, your work many times over, but somehow, we have to learn from it. And this is not about you.
Oh, I get it.
I'm just saying, my opinion is, we've been through this 15 times, and I don't think we've learned what we need. You've, you're providing this laboratory.
Yeah.
And we're not rocking how we can do it.
Sure.
And so, you know, that's why I was thinking about the one-year thing, not to, not provide you, you know, but just to put some pressure on reasonable nuage on us to figure out what lessons we can get post-event. But just don't take that in any way.
No, 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 it's an investment, right? You're interested in investment. And one of the things we could do is totally work with you, because we try to get, you know, we try to get some tax information and daily spends and stuff, but I think what we should do is, is we should sit down and brainstorm about qualitative and quantitative, right? How many tours did you give? You know, how many, did you book any rentals? Did you have anybody rent? You know, there's this, the soft things, did.
And not, not to, like, you know, not to, you know, say no, but just to find out how, I think of it, because I, my customers sponsored golf tournaments, okay? I mean, and, and you get this information back about, you know, hotel stays and people who did restaurants and so forth, and on a small scale, somehow, we, we just have to figure out how to learn from this stuff, and so I just.
Yeah, and we're more than happy to help, you know, we can definitely, on our side, share, share, share our sides, our costs and everything else, so.
Thanks so much.
Tony, you want to come up here real quick?
The first two years of the event, we had 500 people show up each time. In the third year, we became and associated ourselves with the Washington Blues Society. We went from 500 to 1,250 people. The Washington Blues Society really does a lot of marketing for us around the entire state. The South Bay Blues Organization does the same thing. And so we get a great number of our activity and our marketing through them, and they show up every year, and they, because they like, one of the causes that we have is music for life, and they really like that. We go to their meetings, we go to their events. We won, I was thinking, four years ago, three years ago? Two years ago?
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. The best community blues event festival in the state of Washington. We go to those meetings, and we don't get to vote on that because we're not on the board, but there are people in the Blues Society that recognize this community. They say this is the best event based on size and location, beautiful venue. So we do get a lot of attention, and we get a lot of people, I know a lot of people that come in and I speak to them, they don't, they're not from here. They come from other areas, and they do stay in hotels and motels, they do go to the restaurants, et cetera. So it is, to answer your question, we do have some metrics, and we have done metrics, and we have email databases and things of that nature. So we get a good amount of interaction with people. So, yeah, 1,500 and two years ago, or three years ago, whatever it was. So we do, we get a lot of attraction, we do know where they're coming from, we do have the associations, and we are a well-regarded event in the state of Washington, not only in the state of Washington, but the Northwest. People like to come here. Thank you.
Yeah, just, you know, that, I have no doubt of that. Again, I'm just, I feel like I'm being repetitive, but the question is, for me, is not your event per se, it's what the city can do to make that a repeatable process. It's, it doesn't, to me, it's doesn't, it's not so important how wonderful your event is, and that's, you know, it's wonderful, but we have to figure out a way for ourselves.
So are you asking them to do something, or are you asking our city to do something?
I'm thinking out loud, but I would ask them to be as sharing as possible with the metrics that you.
And are you happy with his recommendation that he would sit and work that out with the city manager?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that this is not about the event.
Okay.
Per se.
All right.
I got you.
Okay, good, good.
That's it.
Councilmember Nottingham, did you have a question?
I had some questions and comments.
Okay. This is time for questions, questions before the motion. This is time for questions, questions before the motion.
Oh, que- questions?
Questions before the motion, yeah.
I, I guess I don't have any questions.
Okay. Any others right now? My, I have, I don't know how much authority you have, I think it would be really nice to do this tonight. If there is this, this quest, this fudgy question about the $2,000, if there was a compromise of $1,000, is that something that you can even decide? And would my council members, it's like, I've got some people here that would like to raise that contribution.
So, so.
If we went.
Okay, so you're, if I hear your proposal, Tracy?
Yeah.
You're, so instead of committing to $2,000 of, of scholarship.
Program scholarship.
It'd be $3,000.
Right. Do you even have authority to, I mean, I heard you guys kinda nod your head on something like that last year, so.
So, I'm Dan Johnson and I'm one of the chairs of the Community Service Committee for our club and we're in charge of local charitable giving. So, I know what our budget is like and, and I tend to think that we could absorb that. But I, I do have another idea, which is, we're, we're having a fundraiser on the 27th of April, Top Golf. How about we play you for it?
Well, that's gonna have to be Tim then. But what I was, what I was going to.
Sort of kidding, but the money, we, we would love for you to come and participate.
But I think what I was going to suggest is that we could use any proceeds from that night towards this, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I think the spirit of it is, you know, the, and so, I mean, since you already have this event planned, unless the council has a problem with that, I mean, they're already planning to sort of do something for the city on the 27th. I'd hate to have them do that and then not.
I love that.
Well, I don't know.
That's me, I don't know, but, but we have other people, okay, I'm gonna call on Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I don't know if we've made it to discussion or.
Well, I, I'm trying to plan the motions, but we, we're gonna have a motion coming up here, so that's what I'm trying to organize the motion.
Right. Yeah, I just am concerned that we've heard from an organization that they need to probably call a meeting, have a quorum and do a vote before they change this proposal. And I think if I was a nonprofit organization and I was asked to do that on the spot in front of everyone, I would feel pretty put out by having that type of request. And you may feel the pressure and need to do that, but that's not how I would treat a guest who come here with a proposal. I would hope that these kinds of details could be worked out in advance. So, I would hate to have any other nonprofit come in here and say, we would like this, and then face a haggling session with them. I think we could take a vote, we could say, yes, let's go back to the drawing board. But we've already said that we haven't included the parking, which is thousands of dollars, into the amount of revenue that we already get.
Okay, thank you. Any, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I'm really uncomfortable with that. This is basically, every nonprofit should be treated exactly the same. And I, I think we're already stretching the bounds of, we want to acknowledge that Rotary has a, has a unique relationship, valuable relationship with the city. But I just, one of my discomforts with this whole thing is that I wish that we could develop a standardized process for all nonprofits. We didn't and we should have. And this whole thing should have been addressed as part of a whole nonprofit funding thing a long time ago. And every time we do this haggling thing here, I, I know it makes Rotary feel like unloved or whatever, but, but it's not. It's just something that every nonprofit has to be treated in exactly the same way. And that's just the optics.
We do have written.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
Don't, do we not have, we, we did, if I, my memory serves me correctly, we put into play a matrix of the way nonprofits are, the way we receive revenues from the nonprofits for how we discount the facilities that the city owns. Do, is that not what we have in place? That's, that's where the first matrix came from of what we've charged over the last three years and what we've given in kind to Rotary over the last three years.
So, correct.
Is it not?
We do, we have a policy in place and my understanding is that two years ago or three, somehow inadvertently, they were given a larger, it was a staff error, a larger discount than what the policy called for. And so, last year.
It was a larger staff error.
Right. And so, last year, that came back to you, all the council chose to give the, outside of what the policy would call for, discount again. And so, now here we are at year three. But yes, we do have a policy and I believe they would be entitled to a 20% discount, but I'd need to check that.
Well, I'll say, I'll say my comments to the motion, since I was cut off and told that I didn't have any comments. So, I, I, I'll be voting to push this further.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, do you have a question before the motion?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
It's my understanding that this proposal is completely outside of the existing nonprofit. I think it's a resolution that we passed back in 2015. And this is a totally different approach that was brought to the city by Rotary. So, this is not a question of treating nonprofits differently. They chose to treat the city differently and that's great. And it's creative. So, it's really a different thing. And, and that's my understanding, is that correct?
That's correct. So, they approached us, well, to be fair, let's back up. There was a letter sent out sometime during the summer, I don't really know when, that was sent to all the nonprofits saying the city was going to be reexamining that policy. And I think through no one's fault, but through transitions, I did not know anything about it. And there was some letter that said, hey, next week, the city's gonna have a new proposal. And it was like my third week and I did not, anyways, we did not have a proposal. And so, I think what happened was Rotary needed to make some plans for their event. We had some conversations in which I said, I think the city really, you know, we need to really see what the city's getting for these discounts. They approached us with this. I believe they also asked for the three years for some predictability on their part.
Okay, so I think we're good with questions. I am going to open the floor for a motion.
Tracy, could I say this one thing?
Sure.
So, one of the things that you brought up that we hadn't thought of was that, that Friday rental. So, for, for the three years, you know, we, we won't need Friday. We, we, we know, we have a workaround. So, that is another revenue stream that, that, that we've been, that we've been interfering with. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm calling for the motion, are you gonna offer a motion?
I move to approve the partnership proposal for the Des Moines Normandy Park Rotary, Rotary Club for the 2025, 2026 and 2027 Poverty Bay Blues and Brews Festival as proposed and authorize the city manager to execute agreements consistent with the proposal.
Do I have a second? Second, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, open for discussion. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend the agreement to one year.
Do I have a second on that amendment? No second, the motion fails. Any discussion, further discussion? Councilmember Mahoney?
I think it's, I really appreciate the Rotary. As you guys all know, I attend pretty much every one of your events. I think we are one of the parties in the negotiation and this is something we hadn't had the opportunity to do. So, it means no disrespect. We just, I look to improve our situation, that could be a win-win. As far as parking revenue and stuff being accounted for, the truth is, is a lot of the spots are filled all day in your event versus those coming in and changing out on a regular basis. So, I'm not sure there's a net gain or loss there. We fill that parking lot on the weekend, we just do, minus bad weather. I can't support this motion because I think we can have a better proposal. You've kinda heard an idea of a counterproposal. And I think it's that simple, that if you came back with something a little bit more reasonable, like I said, I think the goal we need to get to with charities and partnerships, because I think we're setting a new standard, has to be around the 50% mark. It's just my thought. So, with no disrespect to what you guys do, I can't support this motion. I just want you to know.
Councilmember Harris?
You know, I, for the last two years, it all of a sudden called to mind that I have voted for these kinds of things. And I have said, you know, go forth and sin no more, with the understanding that we would develop a more standardized process. And don't, again, it, it doesn't matter if you come to the, the council with a new version of something. To my mind, the discount thing, we, we should just have one funding mechanism for everything we do, one standardized form of accounting. And I mean this totally sincerely, that if we did that, I, I, I would go for this with bells on and, and even more. But it's just, we have too many different things and we don't account for the money. And so, I was hoping we could do this for one year and develop some kind of metrics to improve our own, up our own promotional game. But my concern is that by making this, and this has nothing to do with Rotary, but what's gonna happen is, we're going to continue having the same lack of just, we're just, we're not, we're not doing the things we need to do to make, to, to make that destination thing happen. It's just a discipline thing. And I'm, and it's just, you guys are the laboratory, like I said. And I'll, and I'll leave it there and I, I've just, I'm just worried that we'll just keep doing the same things over and over. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, I guess I've, I've got potentially a friendly amendment, if it would be accepted.
Go, go ahead and offer it.
There actually is, but that's a different issue. Is that we authorize the city manager to enter into this contract or this agreement with the caveat that to add an additional 2,000 if, with a, for the contribution to Parks and Recreation, with a inclement weather clause that would essentially trigger, bring that back, back down. So, not, not the crystal clarity that I'm hoping for, but I don't know if that would be accepted.
I think we understand the motion, but yeah, we would need a second on that.
Yeah, need a, okay. So, there's a motion and a second to amend the, to come back and have a little discussion that's based on inclement weather.
So, I think it's actually authorizing me to negotiate and we'll find a creative way to get where I think the council wants to go, if that's what the majority are voting.
Well, let's see if it is. Let's see if it is. So, is there discussion? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I'm sorry, just can we have it rephrased in a more succinct way?
Thank you.
Okay, I think what I'm hearing is to approve the partnership proposal for the 25, 26 and 27 Blues and Brews Festival with authorizing me to negotiate a way that increases the contribution of the Parks and Rec scholarship component, but has some type of mechanism for, I mean, it sounds like maybe what we'll do it is based on ticket sales, is what I'm thinking out loud of, you know, this ticket sale amount, this, and then if it rains and so hypothetically, you would have, I, I don't know, I'm really thinking on the spot, but like, to figure out something that gets close to what you want, but that is not a succinct motion.
Okay, so we have a, we, we have a motion and a second, discussion. I'm gonna call and Councilmember Grace Matsui first, Deputy Mayor second. Councilmember Harris third.
Yeah, my discussion about that proposed motion, I mean, it, it sounds a little bit harsh to say, we're gonna charge you more if you're more successful and if you do less well, we're gonna charge you less. Which again, is sort of outside any sort of standard policy, I guess. So, while that provides some sort of flexibility, I, it, it again, sort of smacks of, we are trying to claw back from a nonprofit organization, money that already goes to charitable causes, families in need, which we say we would like to do with that money as well. So, I just wanna clarify that that's what we're going for here. If we went with the standard discount, we would get none of the sponsorship that we talked about. The logos, the banners, the space at that time for the outreach around, renting the facility for folks who are not familiar and maybe have never gone to the beach park before. They have had, talked about the signage, the email blast. I'm sure our name would be on the program, all of those things. And I think what is at risk here about this relationship is more important than 2,000 bucks. It is about goodwill, it is about having a great relationship with our nonprofit organizations and not pricing them out. Because asking them to pay full retail is asking them to find a cheaper location. Because retail price is over 13% of their total ticket proceeds, 13%. If I were to say, hey, can you go find something for cheaper? They probably could. And so, us standing on the principle of trying to get 50% more really is not helping us with that relationship with this golden opportunity, those enhanced promotional opportunities as well. I see this going forward as a win-win. We can talk about, and we have continued to talk about, standardizing a nonprofit agreement or community member rental rate. And I'm sure that conversation will continue, because there are so many folks who have so many varied opinions on it. And so, I just wanna emphasize what the potential is here, to seize on at this moment, to say, let's lock this in for three years, let's get those enhanced sponsorship opportunity, let's get together and make sure that this event is positive. You will always get more rental from a private partner, always. But that wedding, and correct me if I'm wrong, probably will not bring in 1,200 people and it probably won't donate $60,000 or $30,000 to kids in need.
I think I have that Deputy Mayor and then, but just, just for the sake of conversation, for the principle that I'm, I'm not just the presiding officer, I'm a councilmember too. And I really would like to take a turn at this before we keep going. I feel an amen to several things that Councilmember Grace Matsui just said. I think it's essential to continue to bring our community together. And I feel like this is a, a unique proposal that's been brought forward. It is, we do have a standard policy, it's been outside of, it's this policy for a few years. But we're getting, we are getting extra parking, we are getting the Friday revenue. We are getting, we are getting all of these things that we've never gotten before. And the goodwill, and I don't want this to be, to everybody to walk out of this room saying, that was a yucky experience, over a couple thousand dollars. It's a couple thousand dollars. I, the only, and I know I was criticized for this little deal thing going up here. That's me, I'm, you know, I used to, you know, we used to do storage lockers, I mean, haggling is my thing. And so, I understand, maybe that was out of protocol. Just try, I love compromise and bridge building and I think that's super important for our community. And I think just taking this, there's no other organization in our community that brings, this is the largest event that, that we have, there's no, nobody else that brings all this. This is just a unique dynamic. We do things, there's another nonprofit in town, we do something totally unique for them, for the value of the community. So, for now, I'm, I'm gonna open for more comments, but I'm not gonna be open to any, anything else. I would like to take the motion as it stands. And that's my, gonna be my position in this conversation. Okay, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
I withdraw my amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Harris, I think you had your. Uh, Councilmember Harris, I think you had your, uh, hand up.
I did not understand the amendment being proposed, and since it is withdrawn, then I have no comment.
Okay. Uh, just wanna be sensitive to you, Councilmember Nutting, if you had, uh, some comments during discussion. Here?
I, I do have some comments during discussion. Um, uh, as Dan and Tony know, I've volunteered, I volunteered all the way up until Vince Coaster was no longer providing, um, food services, I volunteered in the tent, um, serving food for many hours on end. Um, I love the event, um, I do. Uh, we do have policies in place, and this, this, I'm, I'm struggling here, because I, I see the value for the event. Um, I, I would rather forego the 40 tickets, I think the extra $2,000, or if it's, if it's $1,600, whatever tickets are this year, um, that revenue would be better served to the underserved, um, for providing scholarships for, whether it be soccer, baseball, or whatever, uh, some of the kids' camps. It, I, I would prefer that it would be negotiated that we have that extra revenue as opposed to receiving 40 extra tickets. Um, and, and that's just my stance, I, I, I love the event, and I appreciate what Rotary does, I absolutely do. Um, I just, we would be receiving more revenue and less of what is being proposed right now per our current standard for nonprofits at 20%. So, I, I mean, agreed with the other councilmembers to say, we, we need to get a hard fat, hard steadfast rule in place, which we have, we just need to start following it. It's like creating these laws that is not being enforced. I mean, I, I don't know, I'm struggling, so there, there's, that's my comments. Thank you.
Uh, would it be possible for me to say something?
Uh...
Yeah, it's your show.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, I...
Uh, yeah, I just wanna add, uh, I just wanna add something. So, uh, one, uh, we're fully supportive of the Parks and Rec program, you know, we've been talking a lot about the Blues and Brews, but we have this upcoming event that we're doing a three-way split. Uh, we can't make any promises, but it, it could be as much as a total $12,000 total revenue that you would get for, right? So that, that would take care of it. So, you know, so our thing, what we're really trying to do is, is get good at fundraising, Blues and Brews, Drag Queen Bingo, Top Golf, we're doing a, uh, we're doing a casino night, we're doing a car wash.[796.32][796.32](laughing) But anyways, um, we feel, uh, we feel the need in the community to help meet the need of the community. So I'm responsible for the Rotary Club, but man, do I feel the responsibility of the community. We get, we get asked almost weekly, "Jeff, can you do more, can you do more, can you do more?" You should've seen how hard the food bank worked at the Drag Queen, you know, just to get an extra buck, so.
Thank you, Jeff, I, I appreciate that. It is a little bit out of, out of the norm to allow you to be in our negotiation space, so, so thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, so, any other comments? Uh, if there are no more, I would like to take it to the vote, as we did not amend this motion right now on the table, as it stands, as read. Any more comments or discussion? Uh, Councilmember Mahoney?
I'll support your motion, if you're serious about finding other ways to come up with that other 2,000.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to hear.
Okay, if there are no more discussion, uh, all in favor of the motion as read, originally read, raise your red hand. I have Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself, all opposed, Councilmember Harris. So motion passes 5-1. Take a deep breath. Okay, good. Uh, all right, what we need to do now is we do have an executive session planned, we need to excuse to that because we have a, a guest that will, attorney that will be meeting with us. So, uh, next, as the City Council will now dismiss to executive session for the purposes of discussing potential litigation in accordance with RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101AI. The session is expected to last for 20 minutes, and that would be until 8:35? Okay, 8:35.
All right, thanks, Catherine.
We'll be in touch, bye.
Good.
Staff, we have thirty seconds.
Thanks, Mayor Council. I'll go through this briefly because you sort of heard a highlight already. And like I emailed you, the information is changing. So we don't have a firm proposal. Let Tara pull that up real quick. But real quickly again, you heard a lot of this tonight. Obviously, some of these numbers are now changing. But King County is proposing a renewal of their six-year property tax levy regarding parks. And it would generate, I think, with a different rate, I'm unsure, but I think it's probably still pretty close to maybe 1.2, 1.3 billion. It would be on the August ballot. It does sound like from what the rate was that was originally proposed, it has gone down .9, so a little less than one penny. But really, the bulk of the conversation leading up to this has been about the local distribution and how, you know, the cities outside of Seattle can really take advantage of things. So I think we heard some updates today from Councilmember Quinn on sort of what some potential new distribution amounts may be looking like. But the reason why we put this on the ballot tonight is because, I believe, next week, the pick committee as part of SCA will be meeting again, which Deputy Mayor Steinmetz is part of. And so there's been a lot of conversation on whether or not the city of Des Moines wants to have any type of formal stance or statement on the levy and our wishes. You can see on the screen some of the concerns that many of the communities outside of Seattle have been discussing, both from a city manager level and definitely at the elected official level as well. So I'll pause here to open up for your discussion. The options on what we can kind of do tonight are, well, nothing. Nothing is always an option. But there's also the ability to direct staff to prepare a letter to King County, a letter to SCA. We can just defer and have SCA provide input, or we can just wait until we really find out what the details are of the levy. So at this point, I turn it over to you all.
Hearing our councilmember tonight, I was impressed with the efforts made to support the South County, South part of, or King County, the South area of King County, sorry, I've already been late. And I think as far as the advantages we get, because I think now it's, he's nearing by base what he said, $400,000 a year where we'd had the previous of 300, and we get 200, just shy of 200,000 now. Plus the 3.3 million for those, plus the potential for grants. I think we stand to gain, and I think a letter of support is in order. That's what I have.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I am going to say ditto to all of the things that Councilmember Mahoney just said. I think it was really heartening to hear that the council members heard objections about the amount that was being proposed. They heard that they perhaps were, other cities outside of Seattle were worried about the distribution and passed through. It's wonderful that we had the opportunity to speak directly with our county council member and ask for additional support for facilities that we have here in Des Moines. So I'm glad, very glad to hear that there was some give and take there. They considered the feedback. And I'm hopeful that that kind of positive reaction can continue. And I think it would be important to reinforce that by saying, "We like this proposal better than your previous proposal." So what letter we can give would be great. You can come back to me on this part, so feel free if there are other folks who want to make a general comment. But I would love to know at some point in time how successful we've been at grants beyond our yearly allotment that we get. And are we in a good spot to say, "Hey, you haven't given us a grant in five years, six years, eight years, I don't know." And so should we be preparing for something knowing that the money may be coming? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I agree with a lot that this has moved in the right direction. I mean, much better distribution, I think. We got a nice earmark in there. And I thought Councilmember Quinn was quite responsive on that and came well-prepared. I mean, you know, he had it all, he had all the stuff all written down. That was, that was great. I still have some concerns that this is just too big a levy and that there is tax fatigue. And there's a really good chance that it's not going to pass with this size of a levy. And, you know, it's still not a great distribution. We didn't get back to the really granular level, whether this, you know, was looking at 9% outside of Seattle. And has that increased any? I didn't really hear an answer to that. But it is moving in the right direction. And I do think it would be, you know, positive to say, "We appreciate the effort. We think this is moving in the right direction. We still have these concerns that I just articulated, the sheer size of it, and to make sure the distribution is as equitable as possible."
Absolutely. You know, obviously, I go with the will of the council, but I feel like I'd love to see those numbers in writing because even as I was jotting them down, they didn't all quite jive because so much has been moving. And so I would love to sort of see a revised proposal before we send in any type of formal letter. I think that'd be helpful. Because I don't know what the percentage improvement is. And Councilmember Grace Matsui, the grants, something that was coming up, both, I think, at the pick among the elected officials, but also definitely at the city manager level, we have gotten grants from them, so we have. But it's actually like a really small amount that they've set aside for grants, like a pittance in comparison to the whole. And so I didn't quite follow tonight how that had changed. So I'd just love to see those new numbers, and we can definitely share that with you all. And then the last thing is, the mayor had asked about some flexibility on what project were earmarked for, which I had spoken to her about last night. Midway Park was slated for some federal funding. That's definitely up in the air and looking highly unlikely. Yet that's a project that's sort of underway. So I just want to make sure I have the council's okay to contact Councilmember Quinn and let him know sort of a Plan A, Plan B. But no matter what, we want our earmark. Thank you so much. You know, that I could reach out to his staff. I just want to make sure that's okay.
If I can, although I thought I heard 13 million is what's set aside for the grants.
Right, but it's actually 117 million in the original proposal, which is why I'm like, I just need to get the real numbers, yeah.
It got, it got shrunk a lot. There also, at the pick, was a lot of concern about the grants being competitive between the cities rather than being an equitable distribution. It can depend, you know, getting a grant depends a lot on the quality of the grant writer and the way they present it as much as anything else. And so it just, we, that's been a concern at the pick.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Oh, I absolutely agree. I don't think there's anything, I guess, I want to say that the, the, I would love to see the final numbers or close to what we can, like the city manager suggested. And maybe it sounded a little bit too effusive to say, "We love everything that we're doing." I think there are still concerns about how it could be better in the future. But I do think it's important to say, "I feel heard, and you're moving in the right direction."
I would agree with that sentiment entirely, yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Not directly related, but, well, it is. Tagging on to your planning for the, I guess, the six-month program on revenue and so on. The grants from King County have always been, in my experience, very competitive between county council members' programs, and that's why I mentioned automation. But I would love to see a, basically a wish list from the city get prepared. Because essentially, I've been talking with Up the Grove over the years. It's come down to who asks and who is most, just, you know, strident and enthusiastic about the asking. That's why I would love for it to be a strict percentage and just take that. But if the city had a five, 10-year plan of just, this is the magic wand experiment. I think that would really help the situation going forward. Because my experience has been that we tend to ask for the same, we've done a lot of great work at Midway Park, but there are other projects that you could envision, and you just have to think them up. So, thank you.
Councilmember Nettie, I'm going to call on you if you have a comment or a question. I can't see you too well. Don't know if you're raising your hand. There you are.
No, sorry. I don't disagree. I think a letter is in good standings, and then some clarification as well. So I'm right there with, I don't have anything to add to it.
Okay. My thoughts are a little, I appreciated everything that was brought tonight. I appreciate Councilmember Quinn coming. I appreciate the fact that they have done a little bit on each thing. But right now, the levy, the levy that's going to expire is at 19 cents. The proposed, the original proposal was to raise it up to 24 cents. And their compromise on reducing it is, I think it was actually less than one cent, was like 24.5 cents. So that's what I asked tonight. So I would be, I, if we sent them something, maybe not, say, a specific number like 20 cents or something, but at least something meaningful. A half a cent isn't really a meaningful response to somebody who says that we're tax fatigued. And also, a lot of people don't, I think there's two other huge levy asks coming. I can't remember what the, one of them is the AMS levy that's coming up expiring this year. And there is a messaging that that could be over a billion dollars as well. So there, these things are coming to us in phases. And, oh my goodness, if we ever think that we want to go out to our community again and ask for something, and these things have already come down the road, this is huge. So I, I, there were three basic asks, or three basic things that people are asking in regard to this levy, is a meaningful reduction, preserve and increase the amount directly to the cities, which we saw that was done, and equity in spending for preservation of maintenance ops and new projects. So what I'm wondering is, if you feel comfortable directing our city I'm wondering is, if you feel comfortable directing our city manager to draft something that covers those, and instead of coming up with a number, just say meaningful. In other words, I just don't think that 25, 24.5 cents is a meaningful reduction.
Would you like that addressed to King County, just Councilmember Quinn?
Let's see. Well, I'm, go ahead, Councilmember Mahoney.
The only, the only thing about, on your comments that, now, as we were talking about getting numbers that are really more finalized, here's the deal. If the city of Des Moines is going to greatly benefit from this, even at the reduced rate it is right now, then we should know that before we discuss lowering it another penny or something like that. It's just something where I don't think we want to give that card up yet till we know. Because it might be one of those things for, well, residents, for every $230 that you put into this tax, our city stands to gain, you know, $574. We don't know what that is. Let's find out that first.
So do you know what the deadline is when they're going to be making that decision? There was a chart.
Let me, it was sometime in early April, but the PIC is April 8th?
No, it hasn't. They were thinking about calling a special meeting. So we do meet next week, if that's going to be in time for giving some messaging back to.
Well, I think I'm hearing two different things.
Okay.
Sending something now a little more general, and then I'm hearing, wait until we see some numbers. I think I would feel better writing something if I sort of knew what the counterproposal is.
Yeah.
What I heard was, one, let's try to get, get writing from Councilmember Quinn. So I would have no problem directing the city manager to ask for that so we can see it. And, and two, once we see it, we probably would have, we'd be in a better position to comment on it. But even in that, you know, in asking him, I still think would be a positive to say, glad you did this.
Do you guys feel good with that? Councilmember Mahoney? Councilmember Harris? Okay. All right. And Councilmember Nutting, did you hear that? Do you feel good with that?
I'm having a hard time hearing anything. I can't, I didn't hear the last part of that conversation.
My mistake. I didn't turn on my.
Okay. It was, it was mostly, it was thanking Councilmember Quinn for, for coming and offering some concessions, but could we have a few more numbers? And then the city manager can give us something more specific that we can respond to by next week.
I approve. I'm on board with that.
Okay. All right. Feel good with that? Good. I think we're good on that then. New agenda items for consideration. This, you guys have heard me say this a whole bunch. Does anybody have any new items that they would like to propose? Councilmember Harris.
I actually do. I don't know if you've, the MRSC sent out a blast letter saying that their budget funding is being cut as part of the House proposal. To me, it's unthinkable to have electeds not have, and the city. And so if we're writing a letter, I would ask my colleagues' support to write a letter in support of reinstating that funding. We depend on it for education, for city benefits, and so forth.
Any comments? I'm, I'm like 200% in favor of that. I think it would be tragic to lose MRSC. So.
Would you like me to draft a letter from the city for you all to review, Councilmember Harris, or just provide councilmembers information on how they can write it?
No, I think the city, I mean, I think the city and the council members all, both benefit greatly from the resources. It's just the information resource. It's unthinkable to me that they would go away.
So then, would you, if you drafted that letter, and we're agreeing to it from the dais here, then you could just ask for signatures? Or do we have to re-convince?
So I think what I'm hearing is like, I'll draft a city letter, we'll send that, and then I'll also provide you all with maybe an example, some information, the contact information, that then you could edit as you wanted, is what I think I heard, and what we can absolutely do.
Okay. You're happy with that? Thank you so much. Okay. Now it's time for council member reports. I'm, I think we need a little bit of extra time just to go through this. We, we end early, we end early. So I'm going to ask that we extend for 10 minutes to 9:10 in order to provide council member reports. Councilmember Grace Matsui?
I'm sorry. Is that a motion? Should I second?
That's, I'm going to make that motion.
Were you asking for a motion?
I, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right. Discussion, all in favor? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Harris, and myself, opposed. Councilmember Mahoney and Councilmember Nutting, motion passes 4 to 2. Okay. We'll begin with council member reports. Councilmember Harris.
So I am a member of the RTC Advisory Committee, and I just, I will be sending you all a copy of their latest presentation. It concerns a couple, a couple of things. Well, the main thing is that they are going to reinstate fair enforcement teams, which have gone away for the last four years or so since COVID. They'll be two-person teams. And, you know, it's a good thing, but just want people to be aware of it in that they are not, you know, they're, they're not there to be cops. And so they're going to be very, very light touch. So the public will be seeing them. And I think I attended the High Line Forum, but that is Councilmember Mahoney's thing, so I'll leave that to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I just wanted to encourage folks to get out and participate in some of the community-wide events that are coming up. We have downtown business districts sponsoring an egg hunt, including a golden egg that you can find somewhere along Marine Via Drive. I believe that is going to be April 19. We have the Senior Services Advisory Committee Shred Event is coming up. And unfortunately, I don't have the date in front of me, but I can send that around to make sure that folks participate. We have more people come by to that. It's a great way, would love to invite other council members to stop by. I went to the last one that we held, and it's really interesting. And folks really do take advantage. Some folks have brought in 10 boxes of things to be shredded, and some folks bring in a small bag. And it's just fascinating. And they, we usually have it at the Activity Center. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no problem. And let's see, Top Golf, we talked about. I don't play golf, but I could buy a ticket and cheer folks on. And I do hope that folks, but I, I might try and find some ringers. And so if we do want to find an actual competitive team to see how the city does, we could do council versus staff. Who knows? So I encourage folks to apply. It sounds like the money is getting split between three great causes. And it's a good way to go check out that facility built in Renton and get your golf on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Councilmember Nutting still on?
No.
He's not? Okay. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
You know, they say no man is an island, but I'm feeling like it over here. I've been waiting all night for that joke. Top Golf, I just got told I'm going. I will, I will be there. I'll be on a team. I don't know who else is on the team yet, but Kristen's working on it. We had a great meeting with Brian Davis from the airport, Burian Airport Committee. Tracy, excuse me, Mayor Buxton and I had a good meeting. I attended the 33rd Legislative District Town Hall. There was a huge turnout. Senator Orwell, Representative Gregerson, and Representative Obrus all presented. They answered quite a lot of questions. I also attended the 30th Legislative District Town Hall, which was a much bigger-than-expected turnout. They had a relatively small room at the library and packed that. There were people in the hall. It was, that was pretty amazing. And that was Senator Wilson and Representative Taylor were there. And again, same format, written questions summarized, and gave a lot of answers to that. I also attended the Good Eggs Breakfast that is put on by County Councilmember.
PBR.
Ron Reichbauer. I can't believe I just blanked on that, with Mayor Buxton. And we heard a good presentation by the CEO of Hawaiian Airlines, who, you know, has just merged with Alaska, and is going to create a much more international presence for Alaska Airlines. I was at the last Destination Des Moines meeting, where, you know, lots of, lots of conversation was around, but they are sponsoring a alternative to the Wine Walk, which is a sip, a shop and sip fundraiser. And that will be on May the 10th. You can get a treasure map. You go down around to the stores that are participating. The stores themselves are, are selling whatever it is they have for people to sip. Some will be alcohol and some will not. And you can get a little, you know, mark your treasure map. And then when you go down to, I believe it is the Yacht Club, there will be a prize for, or you'll get entered in a drawing at the end of the day. So kind of, and you can participate in the launching of Boating Season celebration that Yacht Club is going to have. I have been to the Rotary Meeting twice since we last talked, since my wife has decided to be active. I'm told there are Rotary, and, I'm a Rotary Andy, because there used to be Rotary Aunts when Rotary was just men, and their wives were Rotary Aunts. So I'm just a spouse. I'm a Rotary Andy, participating in this. And then lastly, I had a good meeting with Stephanie Fain. I've also had a meeting with Ryan McIrvin. And I have had a good conversation over the phone with Peter Kwan. All of them are running for the Fifth District. No?
It's just not, it's a campaign.
Oh, okay. Never mind then.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Is that not enough?
No, that's funny. So, thank you. I, I attended a Be Loud Breakfast, one of my favorite events of the year, King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, because Sexual Assault Awareness Month is coming up, so I got a little Be Loud button. One of my favorite events of the year. Appreciate that organization. Tended to fund our ferries, regional meeting. PSRC's been putting those on, just working to encourage all, all things ferry throughout the state, whether it's a county-funded or state-funded. So that conversation's moving forward in a healthy way. I attended a couple of State of the City addresses, just to kind of scope out what other cities are doing, but they're also my friends. So Renton and Kent. And I appreciated hearing from them and seeing what they do to engage their city in that way, like to, to give information out to their city and bring people in. Another really great meeting was, you know, you might have all heard that Metro driver Sean Yim was killed. And as a result of that, a response, it was a sad reason to get everybody together, but there were just regional leaders from all over to do a kickoff of the Metro Safety Task Force that they're putting together. And so the chief and I were able to go to that. And it was a really great, several different ways of gathering information, and people at tables, and diverse ways of, of gathering inputs. So appreciated that opportunity. Appreciated being able to go with the chief. So a lot of good things happening in the city, and a lot of good things happening in the county. And appreciate being here. So our next, this concludes our meeting for this evening. Our next meeting date will be April 3. It will be a study session. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. And Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, would you, do I have second, second Councilmember Grace Matsui, all in favor? Raise your right hand. 5-0. And we're adjourned. Okay.